Good evening, everybody. It's 7:00. And we're going to call to order the Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting for June 1st, 2023. I'm also being asked to announce that the Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. Starting with our first appointment, we have a continued hearing for 416 Plymouth Street, Kennedy K-9 Camp. And I guess we're ready to go.
Joe Webby, Webby Engineering and Webby Engineering.
Just a quick point of order. Do you want the agenda read into the record?
Oh, okay. I suppose, yeah. Well, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to read the agenda into the record? Do you want me to... Have you been under... Have you, in the past, read the entire agenda prior to a meeting?
Yes, usually the acting chair did that.
The empty chair?
Yeah, the acting chair.
I thought you said the empty chair. That would also be accurate. I guess we'll do that, then. No point in breaking with precedent. We have appointments at 7:00, as I just mentioned, a continuance for 416 Plymouth Street. At the 5:18 meeting, the board voted unanimously to require an updated site plan for the entire property located at 416 Plymouth Street from the owner. Updated plans were received on 5/24. We also need an extension form signed, which is available. We have a hearing continuing for 359 Plymouth Street, Site Plan Review, Contractor Storage. We have questions about the recording of the special permit and peer review. Discussions, actions to be taken. Jordis Rain Rider's Way, request for $10,000 bond return. We'll go to peer review when "As Built" is received by owner's engineer. And I don't know if that's happened. Is the board open to giving Peggy temporary access to the Planning Board website to update information and upload meeting minutes and Planning Board phone for voice messages? That's something for discussion. We need extension form requirements for 359 Plymouth Street, 416 Plymouth Street. We also have the meeting minutes for May 18th. And we have correspondence from the Halifax zoning enforcement officer, East Bridgewater Zoning Board of Appeals. Again, East Bridgewater Zoning Board of Appeals, Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals, Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals, again, for responses. Any other unscheduled business, which I do not believe there is any.
I make a motion to accept the agenda for July 1st, 2023, as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, Joe, you're on.
Again, Joe Webby. Daniel at K-9 would like to do is he would like to rent 3,600 square feet in the big building that used to be King's Market. I have it here in green. You could ask for an updated site plan. We updated this new as when the Nezaleal's greenhouse is up. I guess we've done what you asked. He would like permission for a change of use to run his business.
I took a look at it earlier today because I was concerned just about traffic flow because this is going to be a drop-off, pickup kind of arrangement.
Well, mostly, actually, I pick up and drop off the dogs.
Okay.
But there will be a small window of time for people to drop off pets on their own, too. But that is shown on the site plan that I submitted, how we do the arrows and the signs, the direct traffic.
I did notice those signs. I don't know if people are going to know to use that exactly, but it's on the plan. One of the things that I think needs to be mentioned, and I don't know if the letter is here. Did you happen to see the letter?
I did.
From the zoning officer? She didn't make copies, did she?
No, but it is in the mail, too.
It's in the mail, too.
Do you want me to read it in direct?
Just so that you know that this needs to happen and should have already been brought to your attention. Apparently, it wasn't. The building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, writes, "I have reviewed the proposed site plan for 416 Plymouth Street, Doggy Day Care. Please be advised that the applicant will need a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Under Chapter 167.7(c) Table of Use Regulations, breeding, sale, or boarding of dogs, cats, or fur-bearing animals, or kennel for the breeding or boarding of dogs are only allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals in a business/commercial zone." So you're going to have to apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if you were aware of that or not.
I figured that was the next step after this.
Oh, I was just going to say, it's done already.
Because I tried to apply at first. I thought I was going right to zoning, but then I was told I had to do a site plan first.
Okay.
That's why we're here first.
Well, it came up for another location, so we wanted to be sure that you knew that that was a step you needed to take at some point.
Have you applied for it already?
No, I didn't think I could until I went through this, so...
Well, they probably wanted an approved site plan. They probably would have postponed a vote on it until they had an approved site plan, anyway. Sorry, Joe, I interrupt with you again.
No, no, I think that's exactly the way you might have waited. Instead of having to go get the special permit first and then do a site plan, you want the site plan first.
Yeah. Has anyone, everyone had a chance to look at the site plan proposal? Does anybody have any questions?
No, I think we've discussed in the past about pick-up and drop-off. What else did we discuss? There was one parking space or something, something in the back.
The handicap part.
Yeah, yeah.
And make sure that the doorway was, like, handicap, you know, inaccessible.
So you could ramp it up.
How about lighting back there? Does anything need to be shielded or anything? Or are you going to need lighting come winter time when it's dark and people...
Well, there's already lighting on the building that's marked on the site plan.
Okay.
But there's no additional changes to the, you know, the space outside as it is.
There's some pole lighting out there, too, if I...
Yes, yep.
I guess, can we approve this contingent upon the special permit? Or would you rather wait until after?
I think they're going to want an approved site plan first. I think the contingent is the best idea. If anybody has a different opinion?
I'm still confused why we don't have the owner of the property in here doing the site plan, but...
Well, he probably wouldn't have said anything, anyway. The engineer's here.
What is the total acreage of the lot?
Twenty-seven-ish, 227. Most of it is wet.
Does anybody have a concern?
I think we've covered it plenty of times.
My God.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let's entertain a motion. Anybody wants to move?
I'll make a motion then to accept the petition at 416 Plymouth Street as presented.
You're going to put contingent upon a special permit?
Uh...
Or we don't have to do that. He still needs a special permit, too.
Right. Contingent upon the approval of the special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yeah, we can do that or not do that, either way.
Would that mean I have to come back?
Oh, sorry.
Back from...
By phone?
Thank God.
As you said, going to come back after zoning.
No.
If you go through zoning, what's all the...
Yeah, right, right, right.
Hundred percent.
So I wouldn't even put the contingent on there.
So I'll withdraw.
Because if, for whatever reason, the zoning board didn't give him the special permit, it squashes the whole deal, anyway.
Yeah, I'll withdraw it.
All we have...
Save your step.
Do we have a second? Was there a second?
Well, a second, we had a motion, right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Very much.
500?
No, 401.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
I'm opposed.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay. One down. 359 Plymouth Street, Contractor Storage. I don't believe anyone's here for that.
No. Oh, we didn't have the sign.
But we're not... Was that going to actually be on tonight?
We didn't have the sign. And we don't need it because it's done.
Yeah.
Just thinking now. What did you say?
359. Did we... Were we going to hear something about that tonight, or were we waiting?
Um, I...
For the peer review?
Yes. So we need an extension because they have to up June 8th, and we won't be able to see them until June 8th.
Right. And they're not here to sign an extension.
So that we have till June 8th to have them sign it by email so we can all sign it and then have Peggy sign it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have that here.
And have her contact him and, you know, make sure he knows.
Yes. So we'll make sure that... Well, wait a minute. Kevin Grady signed it as an agent for 60 days.
Okay, he presented it, so I don't know if that's good enough.
Why wouldn't it?
Well, the owner should be...
Would the owner be on it?
Yeah, I think the owner should be signing it, too.
Right?
Have Peg check on it tomorrow.
Who's the applicant?
The applicant is D'Angelo Darante, so, I mean, he will sign it.
And he was the agent for it, right?
Yeah.
Kevin Grady? Yeah.
Yeah, I still think the owner should be signing, too, but I don't think it's a big deal. It's just a matter of getting him in here to sign.
So do you guys... All right, so this is confusing to me, though, because it says date of public hearing, June 1st, and it says extended to June 8th. Like, I almost feel like we need...
Tonight?
Right. I mean, list it wouldn't be...
What was the date of the original hearing?
November 14th was the petition filed, and it was extended to June 8th. The hearing was put in at a later date. I don't know what that was.
So it was extended to the 8th?
And then there's a date crossed off here from April 24th to... So it's very... Right?
Yeah.
What's that date? Did you say you think we're...
5/25/23.
Yeah, I think that's what we discussed, I think, at the last meeting.
Okay. But this still isn't correct information because it would still only look like it was extended to the 8th.
8th, yeah. I mean, that's...
Wait a minute. We have a blank one right here. Oh, except for she put the address on it. We could make this 350... Well, actually, that's not really the place to put that.
We can still vote to extend it.
And then have the paperwork done?
Yeah.
All right.
I think that's the only thing we can do at this point.
All right. So would you guys want to do a 30-day or a 60-day? Because it would be June 8th totally. It'd be July 8th or August 8th. And August 8th, they'll at least get us through three more meetings.
Yeah. Well, depending on how quick his review engineer is and if we have any questions, once we see whatever the comments are from the review engineer.
Should be done by then. Should have plenty of time.
Six days.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd do 60 days just to be comfortable. We don't have to take it, obviously, but...
Okay. Let me see. I'll make a motion to give an extension for site plan review to 359 Plymouth Street, Contractor Storage for 60 days from June 8th, 2023, to August 8th, 2023.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
So...
Bye. I'm heading for the 359 Plymouth Street.
Oh, okay.
It might be on June 15th, and it might be on in July.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. See you, guys.
Okay. So maybe we'll just leave a note for Peggy to...
Yeah. I mean, I can go in and see her tomorrow unless somebody... Unless you're going in, huh? But I can...
I might be able to come in, but I mean...
I mean, I can stop in in the morning.
Okay. So do you want to write August 8th on here?
Yeah, I think that's the safest thing.
60 days. And I'll just write it here, August 8th.
In case I didn't mention it, I think I did.
Three.
I will be absent from the area from June 9th through June 22nd. Yeah, just leave that in there, and we'll get her to sign it tomorrow. Have her get in touch with us.
Draw a... 4359 Plymouth Street.
All right, moving on. Jordis Rain Rider's Way, request for $10,000 bond return. Have we received an "As Built"?
I haven't heard anything.
I have not seen it. I asked today, and it has not come, so we'll have to table that.
As of last meeting, I know they made mention that previously it made some kind of notation that it was reviewed by the Highway Department. And Rick and I took a ride out there and met with Steve Haywood out there, and he has never seen it or they've never received a request to go approve it. So we went to peer review. I kind of superseded everything until peer review comes back.
Right.
Just looking at it quickly, Steve did point out a couple of things that needed to be addressed. We were having a tough time trying to figure out what drainage was. It goes off into the woods somewhere.
Yeah. Well, there was some question about deliveries, too. I don't know if anybody's ever noticed the budding property there getting deliveries of merchandise, backing enormous trailers and blocking up the whole street.
Okay, so going to the left, Rider's Way, left or right, the antique or, like, Lori Dowie's house that way? Which one?
Um...
Is it part of the name?
Looking at the cul-de-sac.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting my properties here mixed up. Never mind. Take that back. I thought you were talking about the contractor yard again.
Oh.
Yeah, so he actually, when we were there, they were working on it, finishing off the grass on each side and whatnot.
When was this?
This was last month, just before our last meeting. And Steve was on his way back, so we called and said, hey, I'll meet you over there. So I hadn't even been down there to look at it. So he didn't see any huge problems. And then the owner showed up. I always mispronounce his name.
Fabraski.
Fabraski.
Yes. And he's actually building his own house at the end of the cul-de-sac on the left-hand side, and he happened to pull up, and it was, oh, yeah, I'm all set, I'm all done, I'm all set, okay, I need the bond, I need the bond. We're all set. And Steve went, timeout. You know, we've been down that road before.
Well, Steve, right off the bat, had a little problem with the cut into the street, how they blended into the street. He said that wasn't done right.
Oh, yeah, way at the end.
Yeah. That was the first thing he noticed.
That's all before it turned into a tour, right?
Yeah, it's all... But you didn't realize it was going to, you know, be in town, right?
And here the grass halfway up on one side that was, like, right off the street, like, almost like where you'd say the sidewalk was or would be. And so he said, oh, yeah, that's going to be done, that's going to be done, you know, but I'd rather have the peer review and get it done.
We certainly have a history of problems...
Fair to say.
With completion of subdivisions, so...
I mean, the road looks good. It's all finished paved and everything.
Yeah, the top coat's all on and everything.
You know, it's just a matter of doing the grass strips and superseding, but, like I said, the only problem Steve had was the streets. We don't know how that would be resolved because it's all finished paved.
Well, we're going to have to wait for your review.
I think that would be the best...
Yeah. I mean, that's a smart move every time, anyway.
Yeah. Supposedly, they'd done the asphalt away.
Yes, he made mention of that, that the "As Built" was done, by the way, the "As Built" is done, and the "As Built" is done. So, you know, we haven't seen it yet.
I was going to say, it may be done, but we don't have it, so...
Exactly. So let's don our i's and cross our t's and...
We should table this to a future meeting?
I'd say.
Get a motion for that? Or do we have a... Let's pick a date.
Well, it all depends on when the peer review's done, right?
Well, we can put it on and then table it again.
Just like this one, just like this time?
Just keep it on till it's done.
Yeah.
So we'll just have Peggy put it on June 15th, here?
Sounds like a plan. Get a motion?
I was just going to say, you want that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I want, yeah, everything should be...
I'll make a motion. We continue Ryder's Way until the June 15th hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I didn't think so.
He did make it sound like the peer review was going to be on the table here at our next meeting, but surprise.
Peggy is looking to get us to approve her having temporary access to the Planning Board website, which makes a tremendous amount of sense, so she can update information, upload meeting minutes, and planning board phone for voice messages. I make a motion, yes?
I would think that she would already have.
I thought, yeah. It's kind of crazy that she hasn't, yeah.
Yeah, she didn't have it. She reached out to me yesterday and asked if she could do something. And I said, well, I don't have the authority of the board, but I don't think anyone's going to have a problem with this, but make sure it's on the agenda.
She does have access to the Planning Board's website and computers because remember when we were going through that whole stuff and seeing nobody had it?
Yeah, I think she wants to be able to.
Yeah, I was doing it for a little while, and it's just way too much work in a full-time business to do that. But she did take over on making sure the messages and all that were taken care of.
Is it safe to assume that nothing's happened with the secondary yet?
That's safe to assume.
The last time I spoke with Cody, he said there was, that was at least two weeks ago, it might have been even three. He said, I asked, he said he had one application. And I said, how's it look? And he went...
I thought there was eight at one point.
Well, that was...
That was with the part-time.
Yes.
Now they changed it to a full-time.
Right.
With both, you know, both boards.
Historically, it's always been a mom's hours kind of job, you know, people with kids in school because they could work that schedule. It worked nicely for the town. It wasn't, obviously, not a tremendously well-paying position, but for a lot of people, it worked and served the purpose.
Now, maybe things have changed, maybe there's more than... But my last conversation, there was one applicant.
Do they have to be town residents? No.
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 That would be so tough.
But it's typical of every position.
You should have an electric worker.
Nobody...
It's hard.
It's hard to find anybody to do any...
Mine qualified, someone to take it period, you know?
Yeah.
So we voted on it.
I made a motion that we gave it, just as for the form of motion. I...
On second?
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second to allow Peggy temporary access to the Planning Board website. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Next item is signatures, and I think we already covered that.
Do you need to sign that?
Well, it has, like, another address on it, so we might have to run in by June 8th.
Okay, update.
Meeting minutes. She originally had May 4th on here, but those are not complete, so we do have May 18th meeting minutes, because then everyone had an opportunity to look at it.
I read it.
They seemed essentially right to me. I didn't see any...
That's the one that you think Brett was wrong?
Yeah, I asked her, actually, today, I just noticed on the minutes that... And she wasn't sure. She was going to go back and listen to the tape, but it, like, the names were repeated, you know, nomination of Tom Millius's chair, and then you seconded your own nomination.
No, I don't think...
And then the same, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you know, that went right by me. I didn't even...
And then the next, same thing with the next one, Vice Chair. I seconded my nomination. I said, I don't think that was right. But so she was going to go back and listen to it, but I...
At least it doesn't say Richard. It does! Oh, no, wait a minute. That's Richard. That's you. I was like, oh, my God, wait.
I may have seconded your Vice Chair.
I might have got them back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was Richard Gaynor for a while then.
Well...
Yes, on the signatures.
Let's wait for a corrected set. Let her...
It is correct, isn't it?
Did she correct it?
She said she was going to listen to it and thought that...
You said Robert, and so for you, Tom, it said Robert Gaynor.
I made the motion.
Yeah, I did not second...
Richard Mary. It says Richard Mary.
Oh, it's a...
Yep. And then the Vice Chair, Richard Mary motioned.
Because when I read it...
Tom Millius seconded it.
Mine says Robert and Tom Millius.
Oh, well, you have the old one printed. I have this one for signature.
Oh, so she must have taken it.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So I just had, I just got the one on my email.
Yeah, I have this. You want to see?
Sure.
Okay, please.
Yeah, she did. I'll stick.
Why don't we just give Peggy all the money to be Secretary?
She's, I think she's maxed out at her out.
Yeah.
Because she's doing con-con, too.
That was the only thing I found when I read it over.
She said she seems to do a really good job, so...
Yeah, she's pretty conscientious. I've worked with her for a lot of years. She's on top of her stuff.
On the second page, there was...
And she has no fear. She's not intimidated by anybody, which is also...
On page two, the 1, 2, 3 paragraph, the one that starts, that's bullet.
I must have read the new one.
Got the bullet count, gasco, and the board discussed Chapter 167 zoning CEP. It says, "Traffic concerns, congestion of vehicles, killing the traffic light signal, emergence of vehicles." It was just a typo. I think it's supposed to be emergency vehicles. That was, that was the only thing I found on it, other than that.
So do we have, do you have a set that I don't have?
It was in here.
This one. This is, this is the correct one.
Okay, yeah, this is, that makes more sense. Okay, because she's... I thought she showed me this earlier, and then I got another one, which must have been the previous one. So we're good with this?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for, what day was it?
May 18th.
May 18th, 2023, as written.
Have a second?
Second.
We have...
Aye.
All righty, then. We have a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes of May 18th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it.
Did, no. She crossed out May 4th or...
Because they're not done.
Oh, they're not? Well, because I had one here, but...
That one's been removed.
She told me this afternoon that they weren't done.
Tell them what they're missing.
Unless she just did it.
There's none in here.
Okay.
Put it on to the...
She did scratch it off, so it can get estimated.
It was a draft she did for the 4th meeting, so it's not done.
Don't mind the little slash there. Just go over it.
Slashed.
Lots of these big water.
Mail and correspondence. We've got that letter from the zoning enforcement officer.
Is it, why does it say 300? Is that just a typo? Or is there another one being...
I think that side of the street is not individually numbered. I think they're units. I think he's calling the whole thing 300. Although they are individually numbered, I think they're, no?
Do you mean right at Pal Plaza?
Yeah.
It's 416 to 432, I think.
Um, this, this is the other one.
300 would be...
The one on the corner where the Hawaii Garden was.
Yeah. Are they trying to put one there?
Yes.
Oh?
Yeah.
Another one?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah.
I didn't know about that one yet.
Hey.
Or maybe I confused it, thought it was the wrong number.
East Bridgewater Zoning Board of Appeals. I mean, I'm sure you're all aware that anytime there's a special permit or a Planning Board hearing, you have to notify your budding towns. It's just their responses.
I usually want to see if anything's really close to the border.
Usually not, but...
Yeah, we have Madison Street, and we have Pleasant Street in East Bridgewater. All pretty far away.
Yeah, no, I don't see any impact to Halifax.
You know, for nothing, did Joe leave the site plan for...
We've got copies here.
We do have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've never seen...
Should we sign?
Do we have a... You know, that's been a problem in a lot of cases. A lot of these plans are coming through, not just here, without signature blocks on them. Do we have a signature block?
I would say, we've been pretty good at that for the last two years, I would say. Everything that we've passed through...
I haven't seen them. I mean, usually, I've usually made some...
Yeah, because my first step, we have to make sure you use the right...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was when we were signing on my log, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, these don't have signatures. So we'd have to make...
Sign under description? Yeah.
Well, you can't really do that.
I bet there's a stamp up there.
I mean, really, in all honesty, you can just take it and just do this.
Yeah, approved Halifax Planning Board. Just as an informational item under other business, I had suggested to the building department, see what you guys feel about it.
Are we signing?
It's really, we could. There's no reason not to. Of course, you know, we'd have to sign more than one copy, but...
Yeah. I mean, I think you've got it.
Is that dated, too? Maybe we should...
It's May 24, 22.
That we signed off on?
Uh, 5/22/23.
Uh, 5/22/23 is the last date on it.
I'll give you the date of signing that we approved it.
We can write that on it.
Yeah, you have probably prettier handwriting than I do, so I'll let you put that on there. You're my chicken scratch.
We should ask for signature blocks on the plans from now on, make sure they're on.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Usually they are, yeah. What I was saying is, I, I had suggested to the building department that they might wanna consider a procedure where any, any permit application that comes in, or anything that's being forwarded to another board, have before it goes anywhere, a zoning determination from the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah.
I don't think we've been doing that in the past in Halifax. I'm taking that lead from what we do in another town. Everything that starts with a zoning determination from the zoning enforcement office, and I think that saves a lot of trouble, like, for instance, he apparently knew the previous applicant that he needed a special permit, but that isn't always the case. And, you know, you get down the line and then find out you got one stumbling block more that you should have handled originally.
Well, I, I think that always should have been where it would be, right? I actually thought informally, that's how it did happen.
I think you need one more line here.
Yeah.
Well, I thought, because I didn't-
No, no, that's why you voted no, huh? Okay, well, we'll leave this for Peg.
That's a couple more copies.
Put this over so she sees it. Is there any other unanticipated business from anybody? I'm not hearing any.
What do we need?
Um, I figured that since there's just two more to do, we'll just sign them, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
That way, because I mean, each department should have one of these in their file, right?
The planning board's still been requiring a number of multiple copies, right, to send out to everybody? That hasn't changed.
Three or four, right?
So when we sign them, don't you think that we should have one in the building department, one in the board of health, one in the planning, one in zoning, so that when everybody takes in conservation?
Well, that, that's exactly the point of having multiple copies.
Is he gonna have that set of plans for zoning, anyway?
Well, this is, this is a site plan.
Yeah, yeah, and they should have an approved site plan, because they're the zoning enforcement officer, so they can't enforce something that they don't have an official copy of.
Right.
It just keeps everybody on the same page. Like, shouldn't there be one down at the assessor's office as well, like?
Not necessarily, they don't-
Would it help them in some cases?
Board of, Board of Health, obviously, the building department needs one, um, and that would include the zoning enforcement officer in this case.
Thanks.
Constipation, I suppose, if they had any issues. Nice lines there, you know?
Oh, yeah, they're getting bad, I was like, huh.
I was gonna say, they were really good at the beginning.
Bet we have a signature block someplace in the board. We used to have one.
I haven't seen one, but done again.
Last and final?
Last and final. So should we tell, hi Peggy, um, maybe you can distribute these signed copies to the owner and the other departments?
Yeah, I'll be in in the morning. I'll see Peg. Actually, I've been trying to bump into Cody a little bit, too, to see if there was any progress on any hires. I, I assume we would have heard something.
Because he, I think he's asked me the same question a couple of times, but we, we did talk as a, as a group, as a board prior, that, uh, you know, like a review board, an interview board, it'd be, I, I put my name in, that I would attend, you know, if, if and when they have some candidates that-
I would, too.
Applied, well, yes, and then-
Like a search committee kind of thing?
Or like when they come in to interview, that we could be there to ask questions.
Now, the, if it's a combined position, they were looking to combine, um, planning with-
Zoning.
Zoning, okay. Zoning's the, by far, the most difficult part of that, usually, usually contentious. Well, of course, this could be, too, I suppose. All right, I think we're done with our business unless anybody else had anything else that was unforeseen.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye, oh, sorry.